And we are going now. Hey Erin, how are you?
Hey, good. How are you?
I'm great. Thanks for joining us here on Cup of Joe. Have seen you out and about, city councilwoman in Dearborn. Also, member of U of M Dearborn. Obviously, you know, kind of born and raised in Dearborn. I don't know if you're still in Dearborn, but I mean, I'd be guessing so if you're on the city council. I'll let you tell the rest of your story though. I mean, how, you know, what's gotten you down this path? What path are you on? And let's go.
Oh, that's a deep question. Yeah, I mean, I did grow up in Dearborn on the east end of town and went to St. Alphonsus for most of grade school and high school. And then, as you mentioned, U of M Dearborn for undergrad. And was really blessed to find an awesome community through my major, which was women's and gender studies, or women and gender studies. And joined the Women in Learning and Leadership program there and just loved it. And so that really, I think, gave me kind of more of a homey feeling at the Dearborn campus. At the time, it was, you know, all commuter. So sometimes that, you know, you can feel a little disconnected, but that made it feel more like a home to me. So yeah, so I went to U of M Dearborn, had a good experience there. And then in 2008, I moved to Brooklyn, New York. I was part of the New York City Teaching Fellows Program. So I taught middle school special education there for several years. Got my masters in education. And then not long after that, decided to move back to Dearborn. Really wanted to be closer to family and friends and start to get more active in my local community. So a little bit of, a little bit of my journey there.
Awesome. And you've definitely gotten active. I mean, you know, I don't think that a lot of people would, will ever consider joining, you know, something like city council, especially for, you know, I mean, I live in Lyon Township. I love it. But it's not like a real city, right? Like we have 30,000 people or something like that. You know, and we really combined with South Lyon, which also isn't much of a city. So I mean, you put the two together and we don't have like big things going on. Now, we're starting to, right? Because there's a lot of building going on out here and there's land. And so you start to see some more things. But I just don't think that a lot of people go, you know, I'm gonna jump on, I'm gonna try to run and get on the city council and stuff like that. And, you know, I don't know, was it challenging being a woman coming back to Michigan? So kind of don't have that story anymore. You left, oh, now you want to come back, you know, that type of thing. Was that a challenge for you to join and was it difficult?
That's a good question. I mean, I came back to Michigan in late 2010. And I ran for council in 2017. So at that point, I had been back for a good amount of time. You know, and in the interim, I had, you know, started my job at University of Michigan out in Ann Arbor, but had stayed and lived in Dearborn that entire time. So I still had that connection. And I had become a City Beautiful Commissioner back in, I think it was 2014. And so really started getting involved in that way, wound up chairing the commission for a few years in my time there. And just really enjoyed that, enjoyed getting to know people, started some neighborhood cleanup efforts and things of that nature. So I think being part of City Beautiful really helped me kind of get established as someone who was doing work in the city. Not as an elected official at that point, but just, you know, someone who cared and wanted to try to make good things happen. And so from that point, I started thinking, you know, how do I take that to the next level? And actually, I didn't mention this earlier, but when I was an undergrad, I was a research assistant in the city council office for the last two years of undergrad. It was an internship that I did. So I had had a little bit of that behind the scenes experience and knew a little bit about council. And so, you know, from there, I started thinking, okay, you know, maybe that's something that I would be interested in and could do. And in 2015, I was part of the Michigan Political Leadership Program through Michigan State. So I really, I think I started kind of thinking about it probably about 2015. You know, did that kind of year-long training through MSU. Enjoyed that, met a lot of amazing people, learned a lot about, you know, what it really looks like to campaign and what that takes. And then in 2017, you know, there wound up being two seats open on council and I ran and worked really, really hard. You know, I had some training, but I think nothing can really prepare you for what it looks like to campaign. You know, just in terms of the time commitment and I think like the vulnerability that's involved with that. That's something that I hadn't anticipated. And so it was different from what I thought, but in a lot of ways, it was better too.
Are the smear campaigns bad on council campaigns like it is if you're going big, big, big political?
Yeah, that's a good question. It wasn't too bad. I mean, I, first city council, I didn't experience too much of that. I mean, sometimes, you know, there's chatter behind the scenes or, you know, sometimes people may, you know, take something you say or an element of your background and, you know, misunderstand it or, you know, misinterpret it. And that gets around a little bit. But I didn't experience anything too bad or any like major targeted attacks really. So I was fortunate in that sense.
I would hope that would be the case. It would be nice if that was the case even all the way up to president. But it hasn't been the way for quite a while and it certainly hasn't seemed to be getting any better. So. So, I mean, you've really got, we've probably got more than two lives, but you've got really like these two lives, right? You've got this U of M life and it's very, I feel like women focused and gender focused. And then you've got kind of like the city council life. And, you know, it's really like, I was just intrigued by just a little bit that I've seen via social media, whether that be LinkedIn or Facebook or, you know, then we had already scheduled this. And then your name pops up in the newspaper because we've changed, you changed successfully or changing the name of one of the buildings there from former Mayor Hubbard. Tell us more about that because, and let me just say, first of all, no wordsmiths. I hope I don't ever say something wrong, like I maybe said, you know, well, city, South Lyon's not a real city. I just mean, we're not like 100,000, 200,000, right? Same thing. If I, if I ask you, are, where's your plans to go? Is city council a stepping stone? It's not that it's a stepping stone. It's just, there's a path, right? You have city council, it's much different from senator. That's all. So same, same thing along this, this conversation. If I say something wrong, I certainly don't mean to.
I hear you.
But, but I just, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big thing because one of the things was even quoted in one of the two newspapers, either Free Press or the Detroit News, was, you know, it's not a part of cancel culture, you know, which has really become a thing. And I'd love to even get your take on that. But before we go there, you know, why change the name of a building? Maybe how the building get named that in the first place? And then why change the name? And, and what's the future look like for that?
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that. So we did recently, council voted unanimously to remove the Hubbard name from the ballroom in our civic center. So the, the building itself is named, formally named, the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center. And then the ballroom is a space that can hold, I think around 600 to 800 people within that building. And so the Hubbard name was put on the ballroom back in 2007. And my understanding from the research I've done is that in the old Hyatt Hotel, which is kind of a landmark in Dearborn along Michigan Avenue, there was a Hubbard Ballroom. And when the Hyatt was, you know, closing in that location, the name and the actual letters that spell out Hubbard Ballroom above the two entrances to the space were transferred over to our ballroom at the civic center. And so that name has been there almost 15 years now. And I will say, you know, the process started quite a while ago, actually. I worked with another one of my council colleagues to come up with kind of a citywide naming and renaming policy. Because we really didn't have anything on the books. You know, things would, a name would be, you know, applied to a space and, you know, it wasn't necessarily a bad thing in most cases, but there wasn't a written policy or kind of a rulebook, if you will. And so we came up with that. That passed unanimously back in early March of 2020, so almost a year ago. And then in the summer, I came to, you know, my colleagues, talked with them, talked to the recreation department who manage and market the space and the administration, of course, and said, you know, this is a community gathering space. We have weddings, we have parties, we have professional political events there. And the space has also undergone really extensive renovation and upgrades over the past several years. And so the level of ambiance and elegance is different from what it used to be. And so my feeling was, you know, let's have a name on this space that is inclusive and that's welcoming. You know, and I have very strong feelings about, you know, being proactive with regard to anti-racism work. I'm a white woman. And I know that I represent a diverse population in Dearborn. And so it's very important to me to be, you know, doing that work just within myself as a person. And then, you know, thinking about how that shows up professionally. And so that's where it started. Recreation team brought forth a short list of names. Council discussed that, that list at several public meetings, mayor's briefing sessions. Lincoln was the one that garnered the most support. We did a little background research on any potential trademarking issues. And then ultimately it came forth for a vote this week, January 26th, and passed unanimously.
Nice. Well, it definitely seemed like a lot of hard work. Now, I don't know if you know or not, but I grew up in the Warren Dale part of Detroit. So I really wasn't that far from where you grew up. Hopefully you know that I went to St. Els as well. And I also went to U of M Dearborn. So although I was technically in Detroit, I mean, I was so close. And I actually worked at Henry Ford Estate for a while. So, you know, it's pretty close to a lot of the things kind of going on around there. And certainly had friends and family that lived in the area and things like that. I was always blown away with how many things were named after the person, after Hubbard. But at the same time, you know, I never thought about, well, we just need to change all these names and things like that. And we've kind of gotten to a spot in the last, you know, handful of years that we're looking at, whether it's Columbus Day and saying, well, you know, there's a lot of negatives that go around that. Maybe we shouldn't celebrate Columbus. But I also question, should we just eliminate some of the things, right? Because there seems to be enough bad things or, you know, things that happen with various people. And obviously worse for some than others. But even if we look back at some of our presidents that helped establish this country, helped us be who we are and progress forward, a lot of them didn't do so great things, you know? A lot of them still had, whether it was slaves, maybe involved with alleged rapes, I mean, all kinds of bad stuff, right? But should we just eliminate that name from everything? Should we act like they didn't exist? Or can we somehow teach, you know, hey, this person did some good things, some bad things. And in this class, we're focusing on the things they did to establish the United States of America or something like that, right? And so when I, when I say all that, I go to, okay, we don't think of Lincoln as having like bad anything. But I saw that, you know, we're gonna name possibly, you know, the name Lincoln on it. Well, in 20 years, if we find out that really Lincoln was kind of like this bad womanizer and, you know, that type of, do we change the name again? Like, why even put a person's name on the building? Why not just come up with something a little bit different? You know, I feel like it's risky now, right?
Yeah. No, that's real. And I, yeah, it is. And, you know, when we first were considering the name Lincoln, we kind of, I think in general liked it in the broad sense of, the name itself has a certain, I think, just a level of like stateliness and elegance to it. Like Lincoln Ballroom just sounds nice regardless of it being in reference to a person. We did like, you know, the association with the Lincoln Arm of Ford Motor Company, President Lincoln. And eventually it kind of, it went more down the presidential path. And, you know, no one is perfect, right? That certainly is true. But I think one thing that, that you touched on really stood out to me, I think the key is context, right? And where we're putting names in places of honor. I think, you know, for some folks, like for Mayor Hubbard, I've said before and will say again, probably a broken record on this end, but I think the appropriate place for his name and legacy is the Dearborn Historical Museum, right? He is a historical figure. He is part of Dearborn's history. And that shouldn't and can't be erased, right? Even if I wanted to, I can't go back in time and change that part of our history, the things that were said and done. And to be honest, you know, I know a lot of people talk about cancel culture, right? Like, oh, this person's being canceled, they're being erased. It really isn't about that. And I'm not just saying that. I think for me, you know, if I were to try to cancel or erase Mayor Hubbard and his legacy, that would also be to erase or ignore, you know, the pain, the very real pain that the things that he said and did caused specifically to members of the black community. You know, who, who were here and who were alive at that time and lived with, you know, a lot of the pain, again, of what he said and did and his views on race and anti-black racism specifically. And I would never, I would never want to do that or ignore that reality. But again, I think it's about context. The museum is an appropriate place for that. Our libraries have copies of a book that was written on him. And so folks can still go to appropriate places to learn about him in historical context. My feeling is, you know, putting someone's name in a place of honor, again, that you're honoring that person, right? Like, I wouldn't name a street after you if I thought you were a terrible person, right? I, you know, if I was to put your name on something, that would be like me giving you my seal of approval. And I think we really have to be conscious of that. Who are we elevating? Who are we celebrating and why?
Sure. So obviously it's a step in unification, right? It's part of that. But if I talk to a lot of friends, especially black friends, they still aren't interested in driving through Dearborn, coming to Dearborn, you know, they still have that. So however, I would also say that even in 1999, if you ask somebody, is a Ford better than a Japanese car? They would tell you no, because in 1980, maybe that was the case, right? So it takes a while to change stigmas. And obviously Ford didn't change the stigma of their car by adding mercury or something like that. Well, even though that was added well before 1980, but you know what I'm saying? They didn't market new names. They, they just had to prove it. It's hard to prove whether or not, you know, you have racial biases in your, in your city or state or country without ever interaction. So, you know, what's the next step? Because I think this, personally, I do think it's an important first one. Like I said, I always questioned how his name was on almost everything, streets and buildings and everything like that. But with that being said, you know, just taking him off doesn't automatically say, yeah, see, this is how much we love everybody. Okay, you know? So what's, how do, how do we start to bridge that gap a lot more?
Yeah, that's a great question. And it's a deep question and kind of a tough one to answer because I agree. I mean, I, I hope, like I've said, I hope this sends a strong positive message that we're being proactive about acknowledging, you know, the challenging parts of our history, to say the least. You know, and honoring people in places where it's appropriate and makes sense. You know, I think that work is deep, right? That's community building. It's bridge building work. You know, I've talked for the past few years and would love to see more connection among the cities of Dearborn and Detroit, right? We're longstanding neighbors and certainly there's a lot of history there. And a lot of it is not positive. And I would say that comes from, a lot of that comes from Dearborn, right? And, you know, that's just, that's a reality. But I think we have come a long way in terms of the diversity of our own city. So I think that's hopefully part of our growth and something that we can speak to. But I would like to see more intentional bridge building, even specifically among our neighborhood associations. I always think of the aviation subdivision, which is where St. Alphonsus, our alma mater is located. And, you know, you have the aviation sub in Dearborn. And then you have Tyreman, of course, is a Dearborn-Detroit border. And you have the aviation sub continuing into the city of Detroit. So I would love to see more intentional collaboration and community building there. And I think maybe, and not just that neighborhood, right? We have other, other bordering neighborhoods with our, our friends in Detroit. But I think that that could be a really concrete, tangible way for people to get to know one another and have it be place-based, right? And it's not only, you know, folks from Dearborn and folks from Detroit. It's like, hey, we're all part of, you know, in this case, the same neighborhood that's under the same general umbrella. How can we come together, spend more time together, once it's safe, public health-wise, of course? And, you know, and build that community and build that bridge. I think people getting to know one another just as human beings is really powerful. You know, and then from a local government standpoint, we need to make sure that there are resources available to make that happen. And again, we need to also look at, you know, whose name are we honoring? And how do we go about creating spaces that are inclusive? And I'll close by saying, I think one really important community gathering space in Dearborn is City Hall Park. And they actually, I think just last night had some, some sessions for folks. One session in English and one session for Arabic speakers along the lines of revamping the park and making it even more of a community space. And we've seen like Jazz on the Ave and other events that bring thousands of people from all over the metro area and a lot of the inner ring suburbs and Detroit as well to City Hall Park. So I think the more that we invest in our intentional about those physical spaces and then those ways of bringing people together, I think that's part of it. And I also think it's a never-ending process, right? Human beings are complex and life is messy. But the more we actually know each other and see each other as people and value the things that we have in common and also celebrate our differences, right? We don't have to act like every, you know, individual is exactly the same. That doesn't have to be. And I think there's a lot of beauty in, in our differences that can be celebrated. So that's where I, my mind goes on that.
Yeah, no, for sure. I mean, I think those are great points. And I think, you know, personally, you know, I would agree in that involving neighboring communities, even, even re-involving your own community. Because I feel like there's even a divide between East Dearborn and West Dearborn. A divide in the historic district versus non-historic district, things like that. I mean, as a real estate agent, I have been in houses and had people tell me they only want to live in this historic, you know, district or they only want to live in this thing. Now, this happens in every city, so it's not like a Dearborn-specific quote-unquote problem, right? But I, but I guess maybe being somewhat closer to the relevance around some of those things and maybe why some folks are saying those things. You know, I, I think obviously even some of the unity within the city is like a big, you know, next step too, right? There's, there's a lot of divide, I feel like, unfortunately. And I don't, and, and not just from, say, a Middle Eastern, you know, Islamic versus non, just in general. Like, it's almost like a east side, west side, you know, turf war or something. I don't know. It's crazy. You know, it's like, once we cross Evergreen, it's a whole different thought process.
Well, and I will say, I think, you know, one of the big challenges in Dearborn is the Southfield Freeway. And I'm, I'm not saying I, you know, I'm proposing to tear down the Southfield Freeway. Whenever I mention that, I'm always like, let me just be clear. I'm not talking about that. But it, as you know, I mean, you know the city well, it cuts right through the city. It cuts right through Michigan Avenue, right? And that is kind of the east and west geographical divide in the city. And that makes it hard. You know, we have our kind of downtown corridors along Michigan Avenue on the east end, near City Hall Park, which I was referencing, and then on the west end as you get towards Brady. And it's hard because you have, you know, this huge freeway and you have four lanes of traffic on Michigan Avenue on both sides at that point. And, you know, there really isn't a walkable, you know, kind of downtown or neighborhood space there. So it's like you have, you know, residential, you have businesses on the east end, you have this huge divide. And then once you get past like Southfield Freeway, Evergreen, U of M Dearborn, Fairlane, which are kind of their own islands as well, then it picks up again. But you do have a pretty substantial, like, physical gap between the two where you're just driving, right? There's no, no real interaction there. And so that's a real challenge. And something that I'm not quite sure how to tackle yet because it's tricky.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, I think that there's nothing wrong with one area. I mean, let's face it, the city council, city hall-style buildings, if you will, are all in the east part of Dearborn. And the downtown area is on that west part of Dearborn. But I think that's fine, right? I think if you go out to Howell, you see that there's a downtown and then the rest of it is a lot more rural. It's just the way things go. You know, one of the things, when I, going back to my, you know, commentary on my own township and city, you know, is that our downtown is very small. And while they're working to get it to be a little bit better, a little bit more cool, so to speak, you know, it's been a long process to do so and we've only made a few steps, right? So I think it's natural to have these somewhat separations. It just seems like there's also like stigmas or something like that that's maybe more, more to Dearborn and even Detroit, right? I mean, I just saw the guy that wants to run against Duggan say the same thing. You know, he says, all Mayor Duggan focuses on is downtown, not the rest of the city. So, you know, there's always this divide and I'm sure sometimes it's real and sometimes it's not. Unifying it, man, that goes back to, I don't think there's a lot of people that want to join city council and be congressmen and congresswomen and all this other stuff because it's a, it's a task, you know? And one of the permanent record, as we spoke about, I mean, we're always gonna know how somebody voted. And if somebody spoke up and said something that sounds negative, even if they didn't mean to, you know?
No, that's real. Gosh, the fear of the permanent record. I remember that from like grade school and high school. I thought that was such a thing and then I found out it didn't exist. And I was like, wow, okay. All those years.
I mean, heck, even criminals don't always have permanent records, right? Some things get extended. But yeah, you're right. So I'm curious and maybe you don't even, maybe you're completely unaware. I don't know. But you're a woman who focused on women's studies, gender equality, things like that. What type of criticism did you have? Did you even know that there was criticism? Did you know there were men going around saying, oh, of course, a white woman has gotten this degree or is focusing on this thing because she's been, you know, all these things, right, that they say? And it's not a big population, but it's, it's a big enough that it's, it makes enough noise, right? What was that like? I mean, you basically were a teenager, 18, 19, starting off, going down that path. I mean, was that a tough road traveled?
Good question. Gosh, that was a long time ago. I don't feel old, but you know, when you look back, you're like, oh my gosh, I graduated college, you know, more than a decade ago. It's kind of wild to think about. You know, I mean, I can say, like, when I first started college at U of M Dearborn, I really didn't know what I wanted to do. You know, I went to the college because, you know, my parents kind of said, you know, this is, you know, the next, for us, like kind of logical, you know, step in your life. And I was very privileged to be able to, you know, to be able to get into college and be able to attend. And so my first year and a half, I just, you know, I took classes, but I was kind of aimless. You know, just kind of wandering around, doing what I needed to do, but not, not doing the best that I could do. And I really didn't have a focus. And I think it was, it would have been the winter semester of my second year. I took Intro to Women's and Gender Studies with Dr. Berger on her, Dr. B. And I remember it just, it felt like the whole world opened up to me because they were talking about things in that class that I had experienced my whole life, like street harassment, right? I didn't even know that that had a name. I just thought, oh, you know, here's some, you know, jerk, you know, yelling out their car window while they drive by or something like that. And it always bothered me, but I didn't have a name for it. So like being able to name my lived experiences and know that I wasn't alone in that and that there was research behind some of these things, that felt very empowering. And so I think it was just a natural fit for me. And I think I had always been a feminist, but I didn't necessarily apply that language to myself. And, and I started to at that point. And so for me, I think, I know you mentioned, you know, a reaction from maybe men who, you know, weren't comfortable with it. There was probably some of that, but, you know, I felt so strongly about what I was doing and what I was studying. And still feel so strongly about women's empowerment specifically. Although feminism really is about uplifting everyone ultimately. It didn't really, didn't really bother me. So if that was there, I probably just thought, oh, whatever, you know, just kind of brushed it off.
Sure. So you started to say something and I'd love if you could expound on it, feminism. See, I think, I feel like part of, part of this cancel culture is also labels, right? And I think we really saw it this last couple of years with our presidential candidates, with the Black Lives Matter movement, with, you know, the people that went to the Capitol Building. You know, everyone got labeled, all of a sudden, you know, a small group of really kind of out there thinking people that decided to storm the Capitol, not, not protest, but I'm talking about the ones that stormed the building. That was not Republicans, so to speak, right? I mean, maybe they were, maybe they have Rs next to their name and that's how they vote. But that's not quote Republicans. That's not like the 50% of America, right? And then the same thing for the people that chose violence during, you know, Black Lives Matter protests. And so, you know, if you're a person who suddenly says that you are a feminist or whatever, you suddenly are labeled as, you know, man-hater, cop-hater, you know, you hate white males, I mean, something, right? And it's kind of like, it's not necessarily the case. Give me more of a definition of feminism, really what it's about. Because I feel like it's certainly not what everybody thinks and says it is.
Yeah, that's true, right? The old man-hater label, which is so just outdated. It's always, I don't hear people say that too much anymore. But I actually remember years ago when I was in college, I was getting my wisdom teeth out. And I was at the orthodontist and he said, you know, what are you studying in, in school? And I, I mentioned my major and he goes, oh, so you're a part of the Man-Haters Club? And I said, no. And I was like, are you really about to like perform a procedure on me? And this is how you think? Yikes. It was, I still remember that. I hadn't thought about that in a while. It's definitely not about that. I think for me, feminism is about empowerment, right? And it's also about recognizing inequality that has been, you know, part of our culture, not only in the US, but really around the world for years. You know, for instance, some people will say, Um, you know, for instance, some people will say, oh, you know, at this point in US history, you know, women started working. Well, that's a falsehood. Women have always worked. A lot of that work has been unpaid, right? And I think of women who were enslaved. That was a type of work, if you will, that I can't even fathom. Um, and I, I wouldn't call it work. I don't know what I would call it. Um, but you know, women have been enslaved, um, you know, for centuries in the US and elsewhere. There's that form of, of forced labor, if you will. Um, you know, there's child rearing, there's household work that is unpaid and incredibly undervalued. Um, it's, you know, billions, if not trillions of dollars if women were actually paid for that work. Um, so there are a lot of those falsehoods and just glossing over of history of like, well, women have just kind of been in the background and, you know, not really doing a whole lot or staying home and, and that's not true. So I think it's for me really about having a legitimate look at what women and girls specifically have done um, throughout history and how we have been at the table and also how our voices have been suppressed and being real about that. Um, and I think that does make some people, um, men along the gender spectrum in particular uncomfortable. Because some people feel like, well, I'm being called out or, you know, well, I'm not actively trying to suppress women or women's voices. Um, but I think it's about recognizing, as with racism, when you think about sexism and the, the cross between the two especially. Um, it's about a lot of the ways that, you know, bias, sexism, racism, all of those things are implicit. And they're such a deep part of our culture, um, that you really have to stop and think and recognize it and then unlearn a lot of behavior. So when I think about feminism, it's not just about learning about history and learning about what women have done or how we've been, you know, suppressed in some ways. It's also about unlearning. Um, a lot of the lies and the stories that we've been told that are not accurate. Um, and I, I also think again, as a white woman, feminism has to be about intersectionality. It's not only about gender. Um, it is about race and ethnicity, religious components. Um, all of those parts of people's identities that play into who we are, how we live our lives, what we have access to and how we're treated. Um, so it really is a multi-pronged approach. Um, and gender is one piece of that, but it's not the only piece.
Well, I, and I think the unlearning is probably the most, one of the most important parts. Because to your point of work, if we just look at work as like going to a job work, that has really only been fifty to seventy years, right? I mean, like, as far as
Kind of. I, yeah, I don't mean to cut you off. I, I think to your point, it, it depends on which group you're talking about, right? Um, again, I think, you know, women of color in this country, um, and white women who were maybe economically disadvantaged have worked, whether they've been paid or not, have worked outside the home for, for centuries. So I, I think it kind of, kind of depends, but yeah.
Well, I guess, let's put it this way, we will watch the news sometime in the next month and we will hear of the company's first woman CEO. Or maybe first woman CFO or something high up on a board position of a publicly traded company. So when I say that, I mean, in some ways, it's still a new concept, um, for some people, right? And so, and especially if you did be out a man, um, there's going to be a lot of, uh, negative stigma or stereotype or whatever that comes around it. And, and kind of really understanding and learning a lot more about, um, what really went down. Because I, again, I think in the background, all you hear is, well, you know, affirmative action or something else. Or, you know, like all these stupid things. And I'm not saying that those things have never been the case. I'm, just like anything, I think there have been abuses in every way, good and bad, right? There's probably been some place that really abused a good thing, like affirmative action or something like that. Um, and just immediately tried to focus attention. Hell, I know people that want their wives to be the owner of the business so that they can have a woman-run business. I mean, it has nothing to do with anything other than that. That's not really a great reason to me. Um, they're not trying to empower their wife. They're, they're hoping that there's a tax benefit, you know, or something like that, you know?
Yeah, that's not a good look.
Happen and I think it's the unlearning of, you know, weak or dumb or this or that, you know, these things that are said about people, whether it be basically non-white men. You know, and I'm not here to bash on white men, um, because I don't think that like white men are, quote, the problem. I just think that, you know, we're the group that has always been in power. So when the power challenged, there, that it's normally gonna be against white men.
Sure, right. Yeah, that's the standard.
Um, so I think the unlearning of a lot of these things really is important. Um, and then learning, and part of the unlearning is learning, right? Learning more about what qualified somebody or what, why, why the work, so to speak, was work. And it wasn't, you know, just because they didn't go punch a clock, you know, and things like that, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And maybe that's happened more with quarantine and
People are seeing that. They call it like the second shift for women of, you have your shift at work and then you come home and you're still tasked with so much. Yeah. That might shift, might shift some gender dynamics. I hope so.
For sure. You know, I mean, in my case, if, if I would have been more that, you know, quote, man's man type thing, my wife works, uh, you know, six AM to two thirty PM. So I've been home, quote, with the kids, you know, up until really today, as, you know, was set off camera. Today was my, my kid's, uh, first day back, my middle schooler's first day back, my, my grade schooler has been back. And, um, you know, so I was home and, um, had those, quote, motherly duties, you know, which, um, I think some of that is slowly going away, but I still feel like women in the workplace, you know, is a, a big, big, uh, hurdle. And especially if they're of some sort of other minority, some color or something like that. Um, I mean, we, we've seen it now with our vice president, you know? First thing that came out when she was running was that she slept her way to the top. And I just think the easiest
I hadn't heard that. Oh, that's gross.
Come on, I'll send you some articles when we're done.
I don't wanna read them.
Yeah, it was all about, you know, he, um, she basically was like sleeping with people to get her power in California. And then once she got her power, then she was power hungry, you know, and things like that. And, um, you know, I, I just think, I, I have no idea. I mean, for, technically, it could be true. Okay, I, I can't say that it is absolutely not. I haven't done enough research to say that no way did that
Say it's not.
It doesn't seem like the case, right? I'm with you. I'm gonna say it's not. But if you, if I, if, if I had to prove it, I have no proof one way or the other. Um, but it's just something that is automatically thrown out there. Um, it's like, you know, they, they slept their way to the top or they did something else, or they only got it because they're a woman. And I'll tell you, I mean, I, I feel like it's definitely a long road. We progress a little faster than we probably have. But it is really definitely a long road to
It is.
Create this equality, you know?
Yeah, it is. And it's, you know, that's hard. I mean, we're talking about Vice President Kamala Harris. You know, her being the first woman in that role, she's a woman of color, of course. Holds, again, multiple like intersecting identities that are very powerful and that also make her a target for racism and sexism. Um, you know, now with social media and in a, like, everybody just being online all the time with COVID as well. It feels like so many more people have a platform to spread misinformation. Um, you know, to write, you know, articles that are, that are racist and sexist. Um, and it's, it's a terrible thing. It really is. And I think that's where, you know, we talked about feminism and women kind of breaking down barriers. Um, you know, it's, for me, I think it's wonderful to see a woman and a woman of color as our VP. Because she is, one, incredibly qualified, hardworking, um, you know, and has earned that position, I think, certainly. But, you know, there is, I think for all women, especially being the first to do something, and if it's very public, um, there is a, a price to be paid for that. And she will come out, you know, certainly on top, so I'm, I'm not so worried about that in the long run for her. But she will have to deal with things that, like you said, a white man would never. Um, I've never heard anyone say, oh, you know, Joe Biden became president, he must have slept his way to the top. Like, you just don't hear that. Um, and that's just, it's a terrible, terrible thing. I actually hadn't heard that. I can't say I'm shocked by it, just because that's such an old, like, old trick that people pull out of their hats, but wow, yeah, that's gross.
Well, and actually, you know, to this point, it actually works the other way around. Whereas, well, people will say that the woman slept her way to the top. But then the guy gets the praise for sleeping with the women that were, he was bringing to the top. You know, it's like, oh yeah, that guy is so powerful. He can have any chick he wants. You know, meanwhile, all the chicks, you know, are these bad people because they're sleeping with the guy. Like, I've always, I've always laughed at that particular, um, thing of sexuality where the guy is supposed to do this. Presumably a woman, we won't even go into, you know, other
Right.
Oh, it's just male, female. He's supposed to do all these things with the woman, but then the woman's, you know, is for her because she did those things. It's like, well.
Right, the slut shaming of it. Yeah, well, and that's, we could probably talk for an hour just on that of like, that, you know, for women, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, right? No matter what you do in terms of your sexuality or your body, it's never quite right. Um, and yeah, that's a, that's a tale as old as time, right?
Well, and I think we probably definitely could go much longer than, than you or I probably have time. But I, it, it makes me ask this question. There's obviously a huge, um, there's always been, um, X-rated, whether it be movies or whether it be magazines, whatever. But now we have obviously Instagram and TikTok, which are X-rated. And then you have Twitter, which actually allows pornographic things to be on Twitter, which is really amazing when we talk about
No doubt.
Yeah, they, the porn producers can post pretty much almost a lot, a real video. I mean, there's a little that they might have to cut out, but they don't have to leave much to your imagination on Twitter. Um, which is funny, because obviously everyone's talking about Twitter suppressing everything and it's like, well, they're not suppressing that.
Right, I'm not even on Twitter. I like, I follow along if there's drama on Twitter or like something funny, but that's my, my outsider perspective on it. Yeah.
Me too, to be honest, but, um, but now we also have like OnlyFans. And we still have porn, by the way, right? And so when I think of like, the way that the most of these people, especially women, are successful, it's still with showing skin or being sexually seductive or something like that. I mean, a lot of the people, whether it be influencers or whatever, that are making money are attractive females that are kind of selling the energy drink next to their body. They're selling, you know, some sort of pants by showing how good their butt looks. They're showing, you know, selling bras, but it's never like an A cup woman. It's like some woman that is, you know, like huge breasted, you know, things like that, right? It's constantly still thrown in the face. How do you kind of change that mindset, especially from a young woman's perspective who, you know, I mean, probably looks at it and says, well, I've got it, I can flaunt it, you know, and I can understand that mindset. But there's still like this sexualization and that it's gonna make a man look at you and say, you know, this is what makes you famous, your body, your, your, your looks, not your, right?
Yeah, well, and that, getting back to feminism, right, the whole concept of the male gaze and things, you know, media especially being designed, um, you know, for straight men and of course the sexualization of women and hyper-sexualization, uh, sometimes even of young girls, which is disturbing. Um, yeah, it's hard. I mean, you know, I mean, I was raised Catholic and so, you know, and you went to Catholic school as well. So I have, you know, there's baggage from that and, you know, everything that we were taught. Um, but I, you know, I, it's hard. I mean, on the one hand, I think, you know, there are some women who will say, you know, using my body or, you know, showing my body for professional purposes or to make money is empowering for me. And that's something that I want to do. And I, you know, who am I to say that that's not real? Um, you know, I think if that is the case for you, then, you know, you do what you wanna do and do what you need to do. Um, I think I would certainly, I mean, in general, I want to see women and girls, um, be valued for so much more than what we look like, right? A lot of times even for young girls growing up. You know, you're, oh, she's so pretty or, oh, she's so cute. Well, why don't we say she's so strong? Oh, she's so smart. You know, really good idea, really good answer to that question. Or, you know, you did this project at school or you built something. That was great. You know, that was really powerful. Um, so I think focusing on who girls are, um, from a young age, who they are as people, right? And not objectifying them and not always talking about, you know, oh, you're so pretty or what is she wearing? You know, not reducing women to our appearance. I think that's key. Um, you know, you look how you look and if you choose to use that professionally, if you choose that to make money, you know, there is that option. Um, but I think valuing girls and women as human beings first um, is, is something that I would like to see more of and, and we don't have enough of that now, certainly.
Yeah, well, and, and then you don't really hear those things about, you know, cute little boys. I mean, you, you kind of hear a little bit more now with social media. I feel like every time a picture is posted, um, you know, people say like, so beautiful, so cute, whatever. So maybe, maybe that changes, right? Because that's, I think that's maybe part of it too, is if that, if we looked at boys and men as handsome, cute, whatever the right word is. Um, and said those things about them, other than the random few, right? I mean, it does get said about Zac Efron or it does get said about Leonardo DiCaprio or Brad Pitt or something like that. But even with those, nobody says they got their jobs because of how handsome they were, you know? Um, that just helps. And, and, you know, I mean, it's true, like, we do, we are attracted to certain things, like his, you know, psychologically and, and possibly evolutionary. You know, there are certain things that are attractive that makes you maybe more intrigued. But it doesn't necessarily make you, you know, the CEO of the company, right? So, the difference between acting and, uh, actual, you know, again, not actual work, but for lack of a better term. Um, so, city council now, is there a plan to go to a different level of government? Or kind of stick with city council for a long time and see where it takes you?
Um, I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm planning to run, uh, for reelection this year, so I can tell you that. Um, planning to be on the ballot in Dearborn for city council. I really enjoy, um, you know, work at the local kind of municipal level. I feel like you have a very, you know, immediate kind of day-to-day impact, um, on people's lives. And so I, I really value that. I think it's a good way to make hopefully positive change. Um, and I, you know, I'm open, um, to see what the future holds. I think for me, if I were to run for another position, I would have to feel like it was the right next step and like I could really have a positive impact. I wouldn't wanna run for something else just to mix it up or just to, you know, move to a different level or type of, of government. Um, so let's see, you know, I'm open to exploring possibilities, but right now focused on my work on council and it's definitely keeping me busy. Um, but in a good way, so, yeah.
So, since you're running again, do you have a site for your campaign? Is there anywhere that people want to kind of follow along with what you're doing that you would like to put out there so we can kind of tag it and put in the comments?
Yeah, sure. Um, I would say facebook.com/erinfordearborn, um, is probably the, the best way. Um, and we'll get a website, a new website up and running, uh, soon for the new campaign. So I'm excited about it. Should be, should be good and hopefully twenty twenty-one is, you know, a better year for everybody all around. So, good things to come, I think.
Awesome. Well, um, we'll again, put that up there and, uh, I appreciate your time. It was definitely a big conversation. Um, congratulations on the work, uh, that you guys got accomplished. I mean, not just, you know, changing a name, but other things that obviously you've worked on. This one just happened to make news headlines. Um, and, and good luck in the road ahead, because I feel like now with having coronavirus, COVID is part of everyday life for at least the foreseeable future. Maybe it goes away, but it's still something you have to think about when you make all your plans. And being a part of someone who plans for the city, I mean, events are big and limiting those events is really tough. So, um, I, I sincerely mean good luck when I say good luck in twenty twenty-one and definitely with your reelection, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thanks for the conversation. This was great.
Yeah, awesome. Thanks, Erin, and, uh, we'll talk to you soon.
All right. Thanks. Take care.